Hello, everyone.
Hello.
It's just now 7:30, so we'll begin the Board of Education meeting for this evening once there is a quorum, and we'll wait for a few more trustees to join the call. Just going to wait a moment to see if a few more trustees are joining us. We are nearly all in attendance, so I'm just gonna wait one more moment. All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead and welcome you all to the Board of Education meeting for today, Monday, March 22, 2021. The meeting was already brought to order at 5:00 PM, where we had a motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel matter. And so now we are here resuming the public session. Welcome, Dr. Henning Piedmont and Maureen and Melissa Samansky, trustees and student trustees and members of the administration that are joining us this evening for part of the budget presentation. Before we begin, I have some brief thoughts on Women's History Month that I thought I'd like to share to start off our meeting this evening. I first ran for a seat on the Board of Education in 2017 because I felt there was a need to reset the compass and recalibrate the discourse in our district toward what all of our students need and deserve. I lost that election and ultimately decided to run again in 2018 to demonstrate to my own children that you can face the defeat and not be defeated. Maya Angelou planted that seed in me, as she said in her book, A Letter to My Daughter, "We may encounter many defeats, but we must not be defeated." She's among many women, writers, thinkers, artists, educators, and leaders I admire. In it being Women's History Month, I want to acknowledge the fact that I am proud that our school district leadership team, Valerie, Melissa, and Maureen, are all women. In myself and Sylvia Robles, our board is led by women. Our village has both a female mayor and a village manager. Our youth advocate is female, as are two prominent members of clergy in Hastings. So to all the children and adults too, who have aspirations, particularly those who identify as women or girls, as we've been historically marginalized, learn from our histories. Don't let defeats defeat you. And please join me in acknowledging the women who are leading Hastings through this extraordinary time. With that, Dr. Henning Piedmont, do you have any announcements?
Just a few announcements. On Wednesday, the 24th, there's a Hillside Cep to Coffee at 9:00 AM from 8:00 to 9:00 AM. Also on Wednesday, the 24th, our Policy Committee will be meeting from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. And finally, on Wednesday, the 24th, there is a superintendent's chat from 4:30 to 5:30. On Thursday, the 8th, there is a high school quiz bowl. Sounds very exciting, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. On Monday, the 29th, there is a, and Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, Monday, March 29th through April 5th, we return, we are on spring break, and we return on April 6th. So I hope everyone has a safe and wonderful and enjoyable spring recess. And I hope it's, you're doing things that are, again, allow us all to return safely to our schools on April 6th. In addition, we have a facilities committee meeting on Wednesday, April 7th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. I'd also like to remind everyone that this week, our building administrators will be having a, or sharing a pre-recorded presentation on their school reopening plans. Each of the schools will take the existing school reopening plan that's relevant, relevant to their schools, and upgrade and update the 14 areas that they focused on, ranging from remote learning to cleanliness in the schools associated with mitigation or enhanced mitigation strategies when we return, and will return all in on April 12th. That's our day of reopening for all children. So the administrators will also hyper-length their presentations or those, those plans that they will be upgrading, so that those are available for everyone to review and be very aware of. There's also an opportunity for faculty, staff, and our communities, our community to raise any questions or ask any questions, and our administrators will prepare those answers and make those available through an FAQ document. We also are looking at and finalizing our plan associated with surveillance testing that will occur, starting the week of April 19th. We will start with a reasonable number, we feel, a reasonable percentage is 5% of the student body in each school. And we'll establish a time at the beginning of the day, and our nurses and offices will send information to parents once we share a voluntary parent consent form, which will be necessary, and that information, more information about the surveillance testing will be shared in this Friday's community update. And that concludes my comments and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Good evening, everyone. So first, congratulations to our talented faculty and our fifth-grade students for the performance and initial airing of Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior this past Friday evening. And for anyone who'd like to view the performance, can be accessed from the homepage of our district website, and it's listed under District Announcements. Science research, more good news. So Adam Oppenheimer, who recently presented to the Board of Education, competed at the Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, and he placed first in his Room of Computer and Physical Science Projects. He qualified now to compete in the finals. So he placed second overall, and he's now moving on to compete at the National Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, which will be held virtually from April 14th through the 17th. State testing. So we got some unexpected news from the New York State Education Department for unanticipated flexibility. They're only requiring schools and districts in three through eight applicable to both ELA and MAST to administer Session One Book One, and that will be the only book that contributes to the total test score. No field test questions will be embedded, and that's been typical past practice. And again, Book Two is optional, and we are opting not to administer Book Two. The states indicated that all testing must be done in person, so all remote students have the opportunity to come in if they'd like to test. And they've canceled the performance test from the science exam, so only science written is going to be given. As far as the regions go, they're scheduled to be administered. There are four. So English Language Arts will be given, Living Environment, Algebra One, and Earth Science. They will only be administered as paper and pencil. So again, students must test in person. And any student who takes the test will have the score included on their transcript. Finally, nicest lat. So between April 19th and June 9th, all English language learners will be taking the New York State as a second language achievement test. That's the nicest lat. And that measures students' growth in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Scores from the nicest ladder are used to determine each student's overall English language level and the services and accommodations that the student is eligible for for the following year. The E&amp;L teachers will be in contact, and they'll be providing specific dates and times for testing. Science alignment work is ongoing. Helen Paschley, our wonderful science consultant, has begun to work with us again around alignment to the New York State P-12 Science Learning Standards. I'd like to say thank you to Melissa Shandroff, Science Department Chairperson, and Robin Farrell, our Hillside STEAM teacher, who have been supporting the planning of differentiated outcomes for the work of each grade level. And thank you very much to our building leadership teams for helping with the logistical coordination. Our Professional Learning Committee reconvened on Monday to review the revised 2020-2021 Professional Development Plan, which is actually on as a board agenda item this evening. In light of the pandemic, we pretty much had to redesign what we had been planning all of last year. So you'll see those revisions this evening. We will continue to meet monthly for the remainder of the school year, and our focus will be the Professional Development Plan for the next school year, 21-22, as well as planning for our superintendent's conference days. That is all.
Thank you, Melissa. Maureen, do you have any comments to add now, or?
No, because I'll be doing the update on the capital project and then with the budget. So, great. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I see both Sabine and Sophia are attending. If you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, hello, everyone. The music department is looking to finish editing the recordings of their pieces from a few months ago, and they hope to release those recordings by the end of the week. NAHs and Amnesty International are going to host a student art auction on April 29th. For juniors, applications for National Honor Society and the Peer Leadership Program are now open and are both due in April. And finally, students are excited for a relaxing and hopefully warm spring break. And now let Sophia say a few words.
Hello. I can't believe how big of a difference an extra hour of daylight makes. But, so, I've been happy about that. I had a virtual swim meet today, which was pretty weird, kind of a sign of the times. We swam in our pool, and the other team swam in their pool. And then we recorded times. We actually don't know if we won yet, because the other team hasn't submitted their times. But this weekend, there was a very successful badminton tournament. Teachers participated, students participated, and police officers participated. Yeah, so this week, we heard almost official, probably official prom is going to be happening. It's going to be held totally outdoors on the waterfront and on the Harvest on Hudson patio. And I'm really looking forward to that, as are all of the other seniors I've talked to. And lastly, all the seniors I've talked to are really, really excited for the all-in option on April 12th. And I know, I'm really glad I'll get the chance to see my classmates before I graduate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sabine and Sophia. We are now going to have our public comment period. I want to remind members of the public that the first comment period is an opportunity to make comment on matters pertaining to our agenda. The agenda is posted on the Board of Education part of the Hastings and Hudson District website. You will be limited in your time of speaking, and you must state your name. And if you're a resident of Hastings, I want to remind those making comment that there will be no discussion regarding individual district personnel or students. And those persons wishing to discuss such matters should bring those to the attention of the superintendent during regular business hours. If you'd like to participate in comment, you can use the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of the screen, and Melissa De La Barrera will call on you.
We don't have any hands raised.
Thank you, Melissa. We'll move on to the budget presentation. Maureen, I know you've prepared with those attending this evening information for the board to consider in more detail regarding the proposed budget for next school year. So please go ahead.
Sure, well, thank you. Let me pull up and share my screen so we can get started. And, and it is a process that everyone is involved in, and we kind of unpacked some of the building level and special education budgets last week, and we're going to continue with the other departments, and also share more detailed information in regards to salary information. And we're gonna go through it fairly quickly to allow for the board to also, if you, if you have any questions, you know, we think that's a better way to, instead of going through each line by line, but we'll stop at any time. Can you see my screen? Am I sharing?
Not yet.
Not, not yet.
When is, why? Wait one second, let me get back into the Zoom, sorry.
And while Maureen finds the presentation, I want to thank, Maureen, I want to thank you for working so hard in your office with your team. And I want to thank the leaders who are present this evening to present, Joe Monerato, who's the Director of Facilities, Andrew Wendell, interim Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics, Jeanette Coker, Director of School Counseling, and Melissa Samansky, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. So as more- So as Maureen mentioned, the other half of the leadership team presented last week or the last, at the last board meeting. And I want to thank these administrators for spending the evening with us going through the board, through their presentation and their, as budget managers and the oversight that they have associated with their programs. And again, thank you, Maureen. I turn it over to you.
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to just provide again, some of these slides we have shared before, but I think it's important just to remind anyone, for those who may not have seen any of our previous budget presentations, where our current proposed budget that we, as a total amount that we are currently, has not changed since the beginning of our presentations. So again, we are proposing a spending plan next year of $53,500,000. It is a $1.8 million increase, which again, we will again remind those this evening about, you know, the breakdown of that $1.8 million. It is a budget to budget increase of 3.57. On the revenue side of things, we see how that translates into an actual increase to our property tax levy as well as a resulting tax rate. And as you can see, although the budget to budget is going at 3.57, we're anticipating, you know, our state aid revenues to be restored because mostly driven on federal stimulus and different monies coming into the state, as well as seeing some of our revenue projections, we feel a bit more comfortable increasing. So again, just to remind everyone, currently, we are proposing this budget would come with an increase to individual, approximate increase to individual homeowners of a 1.4 or 5% increase year over year. This does in fact make us tax cap compliant. Again, just as a quick breakdown and we'll get much more into the details tonight and you'll see it in the line items that we share with you. The 1.3 million is what we kind of call a push ahead variance budget. And what that means is that's prior to us adding or restoring any positions. And those increases, the 1.3 are attributable to salary increases. The majority of our budget is driven by payment, you know, people, people who work here, it's a people industry. So we have salary increases. We do have some quest related to some tuitions for students out of district, increase in legal expenses. And then mostly, the majority of these are being driven by employee-related costs, retirement system, which is the TRS or ERS cost and an increase to health insurance. So again, that's about 1.3 and we'll get into greater detail shortly. And then in terms of the other 500, 600,000 of the increase we're currently proposing, that is driven by a restoration of a science. Mr. Eddie Pietro went over this last week with some thoughts of how that, how that'll translate into next year's staffing. We are anticipating or putting some money aside for a potential need of an additional section at Hillside potentially. And then again, the other items here are the increase of mass support, Ms. Cases went over last week, increase of diversity coordinator and the need to increase T-3 positions district-wide. Again, unknown variables. This is where, when I say this is our current budget is, is we have not changed that proposal since the beginning. But again, there could be some tweaks before now and when the board adopts a budget. If there's a difference in what the state aid allocation when we get our final number, which should be coming hopefully in the next week or so, by April 1st, they should be adopting a state budget. Again, final enrollment counts at kindergarten in particular. Then Melissa had mentioned some of the NICE SLATs and things like that. So that'll be the E and L students, special education, bus expenses, leave replacements and some other items. So again, it is a budget we're trying to project in the future and it's driven by students. So there could be some changes before we present the final budget to the board. This is again a breakdown. If later on any of the trustees have any further questions on this, I presented this before. But again, just highlighting where we were showing some increases to revenues, sales tax actually, both this year and next year, although was less than we would have received pre-pandemic, it actually has rebounded a bit and we feel comfortable that we'll, you know, see that, that 600,000 next year. Again, the big chunk of balancing our budget came from that restoration or, you know, the state aid that's getting restored through federal monies. And again, we are recommending an increase in transfers and reserve funding. And we can speak further about that if anyone has any further questions. And that leaves the amount to be raised from property taxes about approximately 700,000. Again, tax cap, it is a tax cap compliant budget. This is a formula that is driven by a state calculation. All the components are there and we, each district has some things that are the same for all districts and some things that are individual. And in our particular calculation this year, it would, it means that we can exceed an increase in our levy of slightly below 700,000. And again, our current budget is compliant. General support. So I'm going to go through the beginning parts of the budget and these are areas that are outside of the building and are kind of under this portion of the budget. So the first section, all of these are dictated by how we have to classify these expenses. When we bucket expenses, it's the requirement under the state law on how we present and how we categorize these expenses. The first area, and I'll just, again, we're going to highlight where the increases or decreases are occurring. Under the area of Board of Education, just to be clear, I know the board knows this, but obviously nobody on the board receives a salary. It's purely voluntary. But there are some expenses that are categorized as Board of Ed, namely, we do participate in being part of the lower regions Board Association and that allows us, you know, they do advocacy on, for school districts and there are other memberships that school districts participate in and that also, they're important to have because it also provides the district a lot of information that's going on statewide and federally and it's an important resource. In addition to that, we also have contract services for our policies that we do have to keep up and keeps us compliant and make sure that anything that we need to have. So again, you'll see some small increases there. And again, really just reflective of actual, nothing new or nothing additional being projected for next year. And again, the increase there, the other line item increase you'll see is just the increase of what the district clerk's actual salary is year over year. So although on a percentage, you know, it's saying 8%, you can see where a membership or two, you know, the overall increase is really a little bit shy of 5,000. Central office, this is the area in which the superintendent's office is budgeted in. And as you can see, we, most of these are just reflecting of the contractual salaries of the individuals who work in that office this year. So again, that, it's not necessarily, we're not projecting an increase. We're actually showing the actual from the previous year. And that's where that increase is being projected, 2.27%. These can change based upon actual salaries for next year. Under the, this is the finance. This is under the, my, my department. And this shows all the salaries for the individuals that work in this office. And it's six, six people and there you see there the contractual, the salary increase there is really, there are people in my office that are in unions and the increase is there are driven by contractual obligations for those individuals. Other than that, we're not projecting other than a very slight increase in our third-party administration of our tax shelter annuity plans. And again, this is just based on the actual expense that is being passed along to us by those companies. So currently, we are projecting approximately $17,000 increase there. Legal representation, I think I mentioned this too earlier. And again, this is just based on what we're actually seeing the last number of years. We're seeing an increase in the need to have our attorneys mostly in the area of litigation. And the projected spend next year is really reflective of what we are spending, what we've spent the last few years, which is, you know, not so much an increase of what we're doing this year, but really just kind of projecting that increase, increased need of some legal services. Personnel, this is again, the Office of the Individual Handles Personnel for the district. And as you see, we again, projecting a small increase based on a salary, increase of that individual. And again, a small, a small increase in the services from BOCES. And again, this is just based on our actual spending with them. And the increases that they pass along to us and they have projected those to be about 3% for next year. This one, I just want to give a little bit more of an explanation. So previously, our Public Information Officer had previously been a employee of the district. And because of that, the expense related to the position was, was partially salaried. And as you can see, that line is zeroed out. So that's where you see the negative 52,000. And the other portion, the expense to support that, for that individual would have been found in health insurance and other areas of the budget that are related to the benefits. What we, when that individual left, we did end up as many districts do contracting the service through BOCES. And BOCES, and we've spoken about BOCES for those who may not be as familiar with it. BOCES is a Board of Cooperative Educational Services and they really exist to provide shared service opportunities for districts. By here, you'll see that although the expense we're projecting is 96,000 for the service for next year, it's important to note that when we expend dollars with BOCES, we receive approximately, and I'm being actually, it could even be a little bit more than that, about 50% back in the following year under the, through our revenue in state aid. Unfortunately, I can't present it as a net figure here because we do have to present our expenses as we've been spending them. But it is actually, the cost of the district is actually closer to about $50,000. So it is actually less expensive than it had been previously because again, we don't have the salary nor do we have the benefits related. But this year, because it's the first year where we're seeing the switch, you'll see that large increase in this area moving forward. If we continue to use the service in that way, then that, the year over year then would be then leveling out. But again, it is actually, quite frankly, a little bit less expensive to have our Public Information Officer hired in this way. Operations and maintenance. And I'm going to turn it over, Joe. I might pop in on a couple of things with salary. But for the most part, Joe Materana, our wonderful Director of Facilities is here tonight and he will be presenting this area of the budget. So Joe, I'll pop up on the next screen for you.
Thanks, Maureen.
No problem.
So in creating the budget, there's a lot of things that we have to think about that impact our budget. Things that are unforeseen, such as what we have on the screen here. If we have an additional outbreak, how many terms of gas we'll be using next winter, how many snowstorms there will be? Will it be warmer? You know, as far as energy costs, there's no way really to tell that. So we go kind of on an average of what we've been using, but you could have a worse winter or not. So those are some of the things that impact the budget. Also, the instructional areas all now have air conditioning. And that's an increase of approximately $40,000 to $50,000 a year in electrical costs. And another $25,000 in replacement costs because as you have that many air conditioners, we usually have at least five or six that we need to replace every year.
So I, Joe, I'm just going to start with the salaries and then you'll, you'll continue with the equipment. So again, the one thing I just want to note in the, you know, we, this does, the increase here mostly reflects contractual obligation increases. But the other item that we do have here, which is a little, which is also contributing to the larger than normal increase, is we did have a few part-time positions we established this year due to COVID. Although we anticipate scaling that back some, we really, this budget still reflects keeping on one part-timer for now. Joe and I felt it really, it was really important part in our planning for next year with not really knowing what's going to happen. So we felt that it was, although we don't anticipate or we're not planning for the same amount of part-time cleaners, we do have a part-time cleaner position here and we're also anticipating some, some additional overtime that may be needed. Again, this is really based on actual and what we've been seeing. And so that really just reflects that. And then also, if there, if there needs to be, you know, some additional hours related to enhanced cleaning. So I just, that's where you're seeing a little bit of a higher uptick in those salary lines there. And, you know, we're hoping that in the following year, we'll see that start leveling out and coming down a bit. Okay, Joe, I'm sorry. You can hop in now.
So you'll see here in the equipment line, we have an increase this year of $12,000. That's to take care of the terrazzo floors that are all through the Farragut complex. That's a piece of machinery that we need. We've had a piece of machinery in there for a long time and it's met its useful life pretty much. And this'll just help us to get the job done quicker, which actually saves on man-hours in the long run. And on contract services, construction manager, that went up about 10,000. We feel like we keep needing to use the architects for engineering reports and things like that. Now that we're considering solar and other projects that are going on throughout the district. So we put a little increase in there so we would cover that, that expense. In the maintenance contract, that seems to be just the cost of doing business. Those are all our inspection services for sprinkler systems, fire systems, playgrounds, gym equipment. That's what that expense is and seems to be an increase every year a little bit. But there's a lot of different inspections that go on each year. Fuel, oil and gas, we look like we might be down a little bit there this year. Electricity, we're down. We did a complete, complete renovation of our lighting system last year. We changed them all out to LED lighting and that seems to be saving us some money. So electricity seems to be down. Telephone expenses, water expenses, those are up due to the fields, all the field usage. And we have sprinkler systems now in all our fields. So we do a lot of watering in the fields and that, that's what brings that, that number up. Unscheduled repairs is something that we use every, every year for things that pop up, which we recently had a couple of things pop up, which would probably cover that expense right there. So things that are unfortunate that happen that you just put money aside for just in case. Supplies, supplies are up. I think that's pretty much due to the cost of supplies.
Yeah, Joe and I were discussing, I mean, I think all of us have experienced that even in our own personal lives, that, you know, cleaning, cleaning supplies are in high demand. They continue to be. I think we were finding that, you know, for the same level of many of the supplies we've used for years, we're seeing an increased cost. And some of the protocols, although there's a separate line item for supplies for COVID, some of the sprayers and things that we've brought into the district, the, the cost of supplies for those even outside of COVID are now kind of part of our cleaning process. So we're also building, you know, some money in beyond the COVID supplies to continue to have those to use. And as Joe said, some of these eventually we believe are going to help us and help our cleaners be more efficient. And then ultimately, maybe we'll see some savings in manpower.
And then we have a increase in BOCES services down there. And those are for testing. We have air quality testing going on because we have an abatement with the construction project. And then they're going to have soil sampling and cement testing and different, different tests through BOCES that we'll be doing. So we have an increase there.
Okay, sorry, next slide.
Next slide. Contract service, grounds upkeep. That's, that's to take care of all the grounds. Those expenses are for paint, paint for the fields, tree work, playground medic to repair things, auto parts, shell gas for all our vehicles, things like that. Repairs district-wide, didn't go up too much. Building repairs. Pretty, pretty similar. And the boiler expense, the boiler expense is actually down this year because we have brand-new boilers and we didn't need to maintain them this year. So that, that reflects the $6,000 decrease in the boiler system this year.
Thank you, Joe. I guess with the board, would you like to hold the questions to the end or would you like to ask questions? We could, we could hold them to the end if that's easier.
Sure, sure. We can hold them to the end. That's fine.
Okay. Again, I'm just going to hop in here again. This, this is really the, we're going in the order in which our budget document is organized and required to be reported. So I'm, this is another, this is another group of items that falls under the state's general support category. So just on the first line there, the insurance, we are seeing a slight increase in insurance, both just our overall insurance went up and as well as the, we are expanding our insurance during the construction period because it's, we've taken, I've added a couple riders to it for both buildings because it's like an additional layer of protection for the school beyond what the contractors provide. So some of this increases the normal year-over-year and about 8,000. So some of this increases the normal year-over-year and about eight thousand of it is, is to provide some additional insurance until the, the construction of both buildings is complete. So, so that's attributing to that increase there. The other items, again, you know, we talk a lot about, we adjust to actual, where, when we find that if either something's a little bit less, so we can make the adjustment. And the next two line items reflect that reduction in expense. And, and yeah, I'll just quickly explain what those two items mean for those who may not be familiar with them. We do pay an assessment to Greenberg, and that's for the sewer system. That's the only taxing entity that we actually have to pay for. We're obviously tax exempt, but this is our share of the sewage sewer, sewer cost to the town of Greenberg. And the last few years, it was about thirty one thousand, thirty-two. So again, we're doing this based on their projected budget, so that's why we have a slight decrease there. The dual residency, that is when we have a home in a bordering property to, this actually reflects a bordering property in Dobbs Ferry. And the child, the child that lives in that home decides to go to Dobbs Ferry's schools, that, the school then bills us back the cost of that. So that, that's what that term there means, and we do have a child there, and we know that's what the, the expense will be. So that, that's what's, and again, we adjusted it. And at times it can be more or less depending on where those children elect to go to school. And on our revenue side, we also charge those other school districts when we have that same situation occurring. The other, the real large chunk you'll see, and it's in our, in our overall general expense, general support, it's a, it's a big piece of the increase there, is in what is called the BOCs administrative charges. BOCs administrative charges are something we do not have control over. Even if we decided not to participate with BOCs at all, we are a BOCs component budget. By law, meaning we would have to pay the share of their administrative charges, and that really covers their capital and their admin charges of the local Southern Westchester BOCs budget. And they do look at the size of the district, and they do look at some level of the services that you're using to figure out what your portion of that is going to be. Each year, the last five years in particular, the increases in this particular line item have been significant. That's due again to the way that BOCs has to categorize some of their expenses in their budget. And the big, what we're told, and when, not told, but we're presented their, their budget each year by the Southern Westchester BOCs Business Manager. And the real driver of this has been that they have had a significant amount of retirees in the last few years, and those retire, retirees help insurance benefits are captured under their administrative portion of their budget. So as they're, they've had a, a large uptick in that. Those costs associated with those retirements are directly passed on to districts. That's where the, the amount of the increase has been significant. It's much more, it's not really driven on a CPI increase, rather it's driven on what's actually occurring with their own retirements. And then there is a piece too, they have like capital leases, and if those go up for, for the places where they operate out of, we do pay a portion. But again, the, the majority of this is being driven. What I'm told is that they hope in the next few years, they showed us a pie chart of, you know, their existing staff. And, and it, it seems as though they're kind of going through a wave now for a lot of retirements. But if, you know, over time, that will start to level out because it's just, you know, there will be a time in which they don't have as many people eligible to retire. But they, I think they somewhat projected, knowing around this time that they were going to have a timeframe in which there were going to be many people eligible for retirement. And, and again, as you can see, that, that's a significant increase for us in terms of percentage as well as dollars. So, um, I, you know, that, that's what really the breakdown of what that six point one five percent increase of that general support category. And as I, as I highlighted to, you know, tonight, this would be one category as well as, I think the, the way we have the PR budget, that's, you know, kind of a year-over-year blip what we're showing there. So, and then mostly everything else is just kind of contractual increases. Those are kind of the two areas. Had those not been there, you know, that, that percent increase would not have been as significant in this overall area. Okay, curriculum, Melissa, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Okay. So the first two line items here are contractual, and they're reflecting contractual increases. And then below that, the four hundred and four fifty lines are associated with both my learning and flexibility to support building level needs also with professional learning.
Supervision, yeah, I'm just gonna, this again, the last time the building level of the principals that were here, they really went through their contractual and their supplies. Tonight, I'm just also presenting any lines that have to do with salaries for any of our employees. So this is the category under principals. The category is full supervision in terms of a budget category. And as you can see, on the actual principal line, be with, with now having the new hires in. Last year, we weren't sure who the replacement of the middle school when we developed our budget. So this is a very small incremental increase here, and that, that has to do with having some new folks in those roles. And the, the year-over-year increase, it is a little bit less than we have projected. The other, the other is increased, there's really a shift to how some of the secretarial positions are staffed in each individual office. And this is really more to do with a shift in titles of those individuals and, and then partially also their contractual raises. But that's kind of the driver of that larger increase there. And then again, we're projecting a little bit less dollars needed for substitutes. Or, and that's really not only for the principals' offices, but that's also for nurses and things like that. That, that's kind of our substitute line for non-teacher staff. So again, the, the majority of that increase is being driven by personnel changes within those offices. Instructional, again, this is just the salary portion that, and Melissa, you can, I'll hand it over to you when we talk about curriculum development. But the first two lines here are just really reflective of what we're anticipating. Our staff, you know, both, all the staff we know are coming back next year. We do have a few retirements that factor into how these numbers landed. There are always some unknowns about, you know, sometimes people either go out on leaves and things like that that we may not know about right now. But this is kind of projecting the, the existing staff. It also reflects the, the proposed new positions we spoke about earlier in the evening, such as the science position at the high school and the allocation for the additional section at Hillside School. So that is reflective, reflected in these numbers. Again, we did have some of our actual staff are a little bit less expensive. We also had a few retirements, so that's why the numbers, you know, overall, you'll see that the, you know, the, the seven twelve is a little bit less because of some actuals that haven't played out this year. Substitute costs, we did increase our substitute, what we pay our substitutes this year, both our term subs as well as our dailies. We were a little bit less, we didn't increase it significantly, but the increase here is really reflective of those small increases. And we are, obviously this year, we're, we'll be higher than that at year-end, but we're hoping that kind of levels out next year. A leave replacement, that's when it's more than a daily sub. That's where you have a teacher that's out, and their replacement is an additional cost. It's captured in this line where both people are getting paid, and it's more, this budget line reflects someone who is filling in for a longer term than just a substitute would be doing. Just to give you a sense, this year, I think by year-end, we're going to spend about seven hundred thousand dollars of leave replacements. But we do think that's due to COVID, you know, typically we're around two, two fifty. So again, being optimistic and projecting that at two hundred thousand for next year. Melissa, do you want to hop in on the, on the next three line?
Yes, so holding steady for both curriculum development and staff development. And one fifty is to support, we're anticipating compensating teachers around mathematics alignment work that's continuing, the middle school resource rollout, summer lesson study work with Dr. Deeter Price-Dennis, additional Sparks curriculum creation for the elementary school, science articulation work, work to strengthen MTSS, which is our multi-tiered system of support. So that would all be connected, for example, with that line. And one fifty-one is to support training and bringing in professional learning. And both the one fifty and one fifty-one lines can be used somewhat interchangeably. What you see with one fifty-two, twenty-one, ten, one fifty-two for summer services, the decrease that's reflected is, was the line allocated to last year's summer learning program for students with IEPs and English language learners. And that reduction is, is reflected because we're not anticipating running that program this year.
Right, and, and the one thing I wanted, you know, I think there's some things, people, we, we know that the state or the federal government, if they end up earmarking some funds for summer services of something, then possibly, I, I mean, but as of right now in our own budget, we, I, I think there are some grants that may come up. But right now, again, we're still waiting that, that was part of, I think, the latest, one of the latest stimulus things that were shared about how some of those dollars need to be earmarked. But, but as Melissa said, currently, we, we did not have that as a line item in our budget. Non-instructional salaries, this is for, it's for a couple of things. It is for our kindergarten needs. These, these are non, non-special ed individuals who work in classrooms. It is also for monitors, and monitors are a part-time position that's similar to an aid. They, they provide supervision and mostly recess at lunchtimes. And they're also budgeted in this amount. Again, we were anticipating a slight decrease. We increased that a bit last year, knowing we would need some additional supervision. We hope to bring that back down a bit. You know, being able to reduce the amount of monitors that we needed to hire this year to help with our hybrid plan. So we're anticipating a decrease there. We shared a lot of this information the last week. Melissa will take you through the, I guess, Melissa, not, not the school-based items, but the non-school-based.
For sure. So I mean, a lot of what you see is fairly explicit and self-explanatory, but I'll, I'll highlight some of the changes, particularly at the district level. So first, if you look at translation services, that is actually a decrease that's reflecting the actuals. So that was the adjustment there. And the increase that's associated with superintendent's conference days reflects an allocation to welcome a keynote speaker to generate enthusiasm and anchor the work for the school year. And this idea of, let's see, where are we? BOCs line, I'm just looking for it. There is supporting teachers with non-BOCs-related learning opportunities. That's the staff development and conferences, so right below superintendent's conference days. That's the change you see reflected there. And then we also see a decrease reflecting a reduction of spending for an outside educational evaluator. And this is actually related to APPR. So there's an annual professional performance review process that we have been engaging over the years, an outside educational evaluator to support with analysis, specifically scores that are connected with teachers and with administrators and the, the process associated with that. So that's the decrease that we're seeing there. We didn't actually have APPR last year. This year, the state is telling us it's a go, but we'll, we'll see what happens. So copiers, the increase that we're seeing there, increase in leases and a shift in location for personnel. So that's the cost that's reflected there. And then the mailing, the district mailing, the decrease is really about the fact that we are doing a lot more online. And so that, so there's less, less paper that's needed.
And then just a very small increase of school security again. As we've been speaking about tonight, some of it is just a small contractual increase. And then also, you know, just some flexibility of additional hours there. You can take these, Melissa.
Okay, so the decrease that you see reflected in the ELA professional development line reflects a decrease associated with the scope of the work with Gravity Goldberg at Hillside. So next year is actually going to focus on word study, and we've been engaged in, with, with Gravity around planning that. But it is, it's a very significant area of study. It's also a smaller area of study. So it's not as comprehensive as the reading, the reading program and the writing program is a smaller component area. So that's the decrease that you're seeing reflected there. The increase in BOCs staff development reflects a variety of different things, including model schools' membership costs, curriculum council, recertification training. So our administrators can conduct observations, workshops for teachers, observation rubrics. And the reflected increase is specifically, the, the chunk of what you're seeing, it's specifically related to mathematics resources and associated learning to unpack those units of study. So that's the more significant piece of that.
Okay, so again, I'm just going to go over the salary lines, and, and this is under the area special education. Lauren Tespa unpacked the rest of their budget the last time we met. And again, just this evening, I'm going to share the salary lines. So the first line, again, this, this, as I've mentioned throughout the evening, when we have adjustments, you know, where our budget, our budget starts, it's the budget last year where we actually, you know, landed, and then we project out the following year. And that's where we're seeing, you know, our, our budget, the actuals, this were a little bit lower. So, you know, we only projecting a need to increase that line fifty-four thousand dollars. And I, we did have one educator that falls under this line and, and will be retiring, and we're anticipating a savings on her replacement. The teacher assistant line, now this one was the, our plan for twenty twenty-one was to reduce or share the teacher assistant positions. And then that, there was a change in course after the, you know, after establishing the budget. So really, we're not increasing the number of individuals. There's not an increase in the number of teacher assistants. It's actually just reflecting what we currently are paying for teacher assistants and projecting that we'll continue that level of staffing. And then actually, the, we had a little bit of a switch. So I think what ended up happening is they kept the teacher assistants, but then there was in the non-instructional salary, that's speaking to the teacher aide line, that eight thirty-nine is reflective of that. What actually happened this year is that line's a little bit lower. So there was a little bit of a flip-flop between the two. And as I had mentioned earlier, we are projecting for additional staff members in that line next year. But the actual this year was about, it was about like seven hundred and change. So that, that there is actually a larger increase in that line over actuals this year. But the, the way it's kind of breaking out from a budget looks a little different. But as you can see in this, in the special education category in terms of overall salaries, we're projecting about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of increase. Instructional media. Again, this is for our librarian, our media specialist. And again, this is a contractual, this is the, the individuals, the two people who are in those roles. And we're projecting a, this is their salary actually increased for next year that we're projecting. And then in terms of the non-instructional, this is really reflecting of a shift we made this year where we did have, these would be the non-instructional folks that work in the, in the library to help support them. But we were able to cover that with different aides that have different blocks of time. And we, we are anticipating a reduction in the overall dollar amount that, or because we're able to cover it, particularly in this building with, with different, different individuals. So we were able to scale back one position when that person shifted roles. Again, this is the line items, and I'm going to speak to the first two. And then Jeanette's going to come on and speak to the occupational education line within the school counseling area of the budget. And again, we are projecting a increase based on contractual obligations for our school counselors. So that's the thirty-three thousand there. We're anticipating, we don't, although we're not cutting back the summer work, this again is based on actuals. I, you know, we believe based on the individuals who are with us, that it will not cost us more than the forty-five thousand we have budgeted for this year. And then again, the other shift here, again, I spoke earlier about, it was just the shifting of how different offices were staffed with secretarial support. So again, that's reflecting the actual, actually what we're spending this year, and we're projecting that to remain the same staffing level. There was a time in which we were sharing one of the staff members, but now both offices have full-time staff members in there. So Jeanette, do you want to speak to the occupational education line item here?
Sure, but before I do, I just want to clarify two little quick things on the instructional salaries in the summer work. Those instructional salaries in Those instructional salaries encompass several of our counselors to offer the services that we do for all of the students in our district. Um, and these services include the entire student body, of course. And that, as Maureen said, that dollar, um, increase does represent the contractual, um, increase per our current year's contract. And as Maureen stated, the summer work, um, we slot out ten days for each of the school counselors to work quote-unquote during the summer. And during the summer typically is, um, doing time after this outside of the school calendar. So end of June, beginning of July, and then approximately, um, about a week prior to teachers returning in August. And while most of the time, we don't take all of those days, some, some of the years we do, simply because, um, there is work to be done. It's, um, work will include, but is not limited to scheduling, uh, scheduling resolutions, record transfers, new entrance coming into the district, completion of various items pertaining to colleges from this past year, moving forward into the following year, uh, credit recovery, um, also known as summer school, prepping for that and getting students, um, you know, registered for that. And, and as Maureen said, that is unchanged from that year. Also mentioned with the non-instructional salaries, those are, um, that increase is, and Maureen, please correct me if I am mistaken, but that increase is not a new position, but it is, is a position that, uh, a previous administrative assistant had, had resigned and we put in a new person to fill that up at the middle school to support our students, because as you know, our administrative assistants are instrumental in communicating information with the, um, with our students, supporting our students and their parents on a daily basis, ensuring the management of our offices, keeping accurate records and data. And, and they're engaging with the stakeholders on, on a lot of levels.
Yep.
That last line, the occupational education represents, um, the tuition for, in, in my budget or in our, in a school counseling budget, to general education students that are interested in, uh, possibly attending the secondary career and technical education program at BOSI's. So students in grades eleven and twelve who are interested in learning specific skills in an industry area, for example, emergency medical services or order technology, cosmetology, um, are, some of them are welcome to explore those particular areas in this program. Students typically spend half a day here at the high school, taking their core courses, and then going off to the Valhalla campus to pursue those interests. Counselors do speak to students and parents, offer the opportunities, they're welcome to visit the program. You know, we'll set all that up to see if that is a right fit for them. So there's a lot of conversation that goes around that. And as you may have heard from, um, Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Stewart's budget from, uh, the previous board session, that their budget, including my own, um, you know, we, we offer the students the opportunity to attend. And it's, oh, it's open to any of the students who are interested and eligible.
Yes. Thank you. And as, as Jeanette was mentioning, um, so, so the slots for Ockhead are budgeted in both Jeanette's, under her, um, budget, uh, area of responsibility as well as, um, Laura Sullivan's. Because, um, so it really doesn't, we offer more slots than, than, than are here. But it's just the way, we're, again, we were required to kind of hold things, kind of track expenses. So thank you for, um, reminding everyone of that, Jeanette. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so, so health, I'll, I'll just, I take this one. This is obviously our nurse's office. And, um, this does reflect going back to what our cur- our current, our pre-COVID staffing is in those buildings. Um, although our budget this year for nurses was three hundred and eight thousand, I think we're near and closer about five hundred thousand or so in actual expenses for this year. And, um, although, although, you know, they've been just a wonderful asset, we're, you know, anticipating not having the need to keep on the additional nursing at both buildings. So again, this is just to, uh, move over and, um, you know, acknowledge the, the individuals that are here and the contractual obligations. There's a, a slight tweak because the part-time nurse at Hillside, I think we originally had a budget of, for two um, in development of the twenty-twenty-one budget and actually, uh, moving forward will be three. So it's contractual obligations plus a slight increase of what we, uh, normally would have had part-time previous to COVID. Summer work, you know, they also, as Jeanette mentioned, our, our nurses, there, there's a need to have some of the work they do. So the guidance counselors does, um, need to be performed, you know, before our sports teams come in. They have to be medically clear. So we need our nurses, um, to help with that and to get everyone's help, care plans ready and, uh, collect all that information before school resumes. We do have that fifteen thousand dollar part-time nurse coverage for COVID. And that's really for, um, contract, what we've also found this year, if we, if we have a need to test or do some of that work next year, that's to allow for funds. If there was a need to surveillance test, we do have some nurses that are, we've hired, um, for that purpose. And again, i- in, in the event, uh, if, if COVID is still around and, and there's a quarantine or something. So we always need to have a nursing staff. So again, there is, this is a line item as just a, an extra layer of protection. We're not planning on having the level of nursing, but we did, we did think it was important to keep a couple of dollars in the event that we needed some additional coverage. And again, the doctor, that's for the, um, uh, the, our school physician. It's a required, um, required contract we, uh, need to have. And, uh, that is the cost of providing that service for our district, um, each year. And they've earned it this year. They've done an amazing job. School psychologists, again, this is just as we've been going through all night, just really reflects the contractual increases for the individuals in that department. And, um, and you'll see that depending on where an individual is, or if it's the same, we know the people and there's no change in the, uh, either retirements or anything. So if many of our, um, uh, staff members that they're moving through, you'll see a change why, you know, in some cases, it's four point four three. It just really depends on the individuals and their, their individual salaries that, that drive those, those increases. Co-curricular. So again, um, oh, Melissa, do you want to hop in?
Yeah, just very briefly. So this is really connected with the performing arts with theater. And the slight increase that we're seeing is really to reflect the restoration of the theater budget from last year. I know there was a lot of discussion around that. That was something that we were able to do this time.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Melissa. As well. And so this is really the, the cost associated with that. But we've also, uh, restored, uh, many of the positions associated with it. So this is for the, you know, the money for putting the show together. And there's also restoration of positions. And that's what we'll, we'll talk about here. So on the first line, again, co-curricular salaries, although the line item again is showing a reduction, really, um, as we tighten up and, and we have, uh, we are projecting to restore, some of the, the positions, but we're also seeing we didn't need as, um, there's other areas in which we, you know, we aren't spending as much. So again, although it's showing a slight reduction here, it, it does reflect, um, we feel confident that all the, either the tech positions and things like that, each show will have those positions. And I think that was, um, I know Melissa spends a lot of time working with the theater group. And, and that was extremely important to them, um, also, as well as the, the funds around helping put on the show. The, the physicians in particular were very important to them. So, you know, we were able to restore those. And then, um, here to contractual services, we do have, um, you know, the ability, so I used to bring in other people outside the district. And, and one of, one of the items that's actually budgeted here is, uh, quote, a heightless work with the current events and things like that. That although it's, it's curricular, it kind of falls because under this, or that's where it's been budgeted traditionally. So this again just reflects actual, and there are some, um, items that, uh, some, uh, like the bridge making at Hillside, some things that do fall under this budget category. But overall, it was adjusted down based on actuals and requests, to be honest. A middle school, again, you'll, the, the restoration here, in addition to what Melissa highlighted, there's some restoration again to support theater and clubs and things, uh, through the, um, through the principals' budgets as well. Overall, the, the increase is very, very, uh, small in the overall category. Athletics, uh, Mr. Wendell.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. On behalf of the entire athletic department, coaching staff and student athletes, I would like to thank you for your unwavering support for the Hastings Athletic Department throughout the year and giving me this opportunity to discuss the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two proposed athletic budget. My main goal as a, at the Director of Health Physical Education and Athletics is to continue to develop and foster a sense of community amongst the student athletes, school district personnel, coaching staff, grounds crew and the community, one that everyone can be proud of, to be a part of. With this being said, throughout the year, I've had the opportunity to meet and collaborate with the entire athletic staff, as well as get crucial feedback from the student athletes, district staff, grounds crew and community members to get a true sense of what is needed to help enhance the entire athletic experience for everyone involved. This encompasses all the necessary equipment and training opportunities needed for each and every program, divisional improvements to help highlight student achievement and force the pride in the school facility, upkeep of all the facilities to provide a safe environment and the award recognition programs that are needed to highlight our student, athletes and coaching staff's achievements and to force a tremendous pride in being a, a yellow jacket. With the understanding of the harsh impact of what this pandemic has done for the school district's budgets and community members' lives everywhere, this budget was mindfully created to help limit the athletic department's overall budget to help lessen the burden on the Hastings community, while still providing a top-notch athletic program for our school district. As you can see from slide forty-two, I was able to reduce nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars from the current budget from this year for the, uh, for the upcoming year. With the help of the Buildings and Grounds Department and the Maintenance Staff, we were able to reduce the re-equipment cost by repairing and installing equipment in-house instead of purchasing all-new equipment. We also reduce spending by changing the athletic director, the train, trainer position from using an outside contracting company to using an in-house athletic trainer and physical education teacher. As for the supply codes, although we could always use additional funding, the entire Ath- Hastings Athletic Department is committed to doing our part to make do with what the same amount of funding to help overall community during these unprecedented times. We also continue to develop a solid rapport with BOSI's in Section One, enabling us to reevaluate our current services without negatively affecting our programs. As you can see from the next slide, there are many aspects that go into running a successful, quality athletic program. And even with the cost of, uh, living and contractual expenditures constantly increasing, we are able to design a budget with only a slight two-point-six-oh percent overall increase. That still provides an excellent athletic program and provides a rewarding experience for everyone involved. I, I'll field questions at the end or whenever you guys need.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to hold them to the end.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Yes. And, and again, the, the other increases here on the top of the slide, it just reflects contractual increases for the individuals, uh, in those positions. And as Drew had said, you know, we are anticipating being able to run all of our teams and, and, uh, but also, you know, Drew has made some, um, reductions where he felt he could comfortably do so. So thank you, Drew.
No problem. Thanks.
Um, instructional technology, um, I am going to go over the, this slide this evening. But, um, next board meeting, I really wanted to, uh, because again, it's a lot of information for one evening. We just want, we'll also be presenting kind of a higher level five-year, as I did last year, technology plan. Because again, technology, um, is, is a, an area in which we, um, have a, a good amount of resources dedicated. But again, it is something that things need to be replaced. And, um, we, we want to make some recommendations and, um, also just, uh, provide some further detail about that. But tonight, I'm just going to, um, you know, discuss, um, some of the changes here. And we'll, again, provide much, uh, greater detail or, you know, I'll definitely answer questions tonight also. So we're, what we're anticipating with the contractual services under technology, we are looking to bring in as another partner, um, to help, we do have a wonderful relationship with BOSI's who really oversees our, our technology. So it's a many districts in the region have a partnership with them. But we're also, um, looking to bring in another, in, um, another, uh, company that, uh, many districts, when they have relationships with BOSI's, but don't have a, a large, um, technology internal staff, they'll bring in a consultant to also help navigate, um, a few things, uh, technology planning, making sure that, uh, are, um, that we're really, um, thinking about our technology plan. And that, that really requires a person with a level of expertise. So, you know, currently, we are projecting that expense, um, it's about twenty-five thousand of the thirty thousand dollar increase. Because it, it is something we do have to get our technology plan. So again, that may not be the same level of expense each year, but we are moving towards new service model with BOSI's. We are really looking to tighten up our five-year spending plan and have a really, um, a very, uh, an outside personal. So in addition to our partnership with BOSI's to, to help us with that, because it is a large, you know, multi-million dollar investment in technology. And it's something that it's definitely important to have some, um, expertise in, in helping us, um, with that as we are entering in the next few years. Um, again, the increase here, um, we, uh, obviously, as, uh, the board knows, we, we had a, a large increase of, of need in technology this year, especially mostly around phone books and, and, and devices and things such as that. But we also, and when we break down the five-year plan a little bit further, there are things, and, and we're in the year in which there were some things that are coming into life. And, um, the, the majority of the increase here is really being driven by some, uh, infrastructure projects that, that, uh, that the warranties are your end-of-life. So, um, that, that includes switches, our, our voice, uh, our telephone system is at end-of-year life. So again, we're going to go into some greater detail and we want to provide that in the context of a five-year plan. But, you know, the increase there is being driven by those type of items. And, and, you know, switch could be ten thousand dollars. So, you know, next year, we, we have, we have some things to do. We knew about it. So again, it was part of our five-year technology, uh, spend plan. We, and, uh, that's the reflected increase there. Um, in terms of some of the other supplies, we, we anticipate, um, a, a slight decrease again, based on, um, actual need. And then, um, the, the other, uh, area, um, here that we are looking at again is our, our land maintenance support agreement. We did add a redundant line this year. So it's not so much a, a large increase year-over-year, this year, as much as it's, we do have some additional, uh, redundant line that we had put in, and that's about forty thousand dollars, um, additional, um, a year. As I had mentioned before, when, just to, to remind, um, everyone, when you do engage with services with BOSI's, in, in a lot of what we're seeing here on this, um, expense chart, this million dollars, many of these items, we get about fifty percent back. So when we have a, a line aid of in our state budget, it's about nine-hundred thousand or so of state aid that comes back and it's BOSI stated, most of it, if not the majority of it, is being driven by our technology spending with them. So again, it really are real, like net expense next year for, for this, um, this particular lining. It is about six hundred thousand. So, um, it is a great partnership. And again, this does reflect, um, about three people who come into the district every day and work. And, and again, all the maintenance and software licensing and internet connections and all, and, uh, test scoring that they do personally. They really, e-school, um, all these different management softwares that, that we need to, to operate. So again, um, the majority of that is being driven by some of that, that increased cost. And again, the need to replace some, some, um, larger pieces of equipment. And this is how it looks as a total, uh, category. So again, I kind of broke down and these are the more individual line items. Melissa, also, can you, can you speak to the online database? Because that's a, a big contributor to the increase here as well.
Sure. So as Maureen just previously mentioned, the pandemic necessitated a lot of new online learning resources. So this year, we had taken on Google Classroom, um, Google Meet, Zoom, the Google G suite of applications. But Zoom, Screencastify, Edgenuity, Odysseyware, iXL, Achieve Three Thousand, just some of the examples. And so we've had to do it. We had to take on a lot to make sure that teachers had what they need to be successful, to be able to facilitate. So since, um, in prep, in preparing for the budget, but also to really understand what's working and what could be working better, a survey was sent out to the faculty to think about what are you actually using, what's working well for you? What should we think about sustaining, moving into the following school year, potentially even in a, hopefully, post-COVID environment where we're, um, we're engaging in more in-person learning. But a lot of the, uh, results that came back helped to shape what could be sustainable as we're turn, we're returning back into the brick and mortar environment. So when you're looking at the line, um, the twenty-six, thirty-four, ninety line that Maureen was referring to, which is for online databases, uh, libraries and software, it looks actually like it reflects an increase, but it actually reflects a decrease due to what was necessary to bring into the repertoire during the pandemic. So, um, so that's what we're looking at, you know, as a result of the surveys, the conversations that we had with faculty members.
Yes, thank you. Um, and like, as Melissa said, I think our actuals, they're mostly, we looked at them the other day, probably close to like one-thirty or one-forty for the year, right? And then you were able to kind of whittle that down with, uh, the teaching staff to keep resources, even the, even the Zoom webinar and thing, even the Zoom licensing are quite expensive for us. So again, it is up really quickly, to be honest.
Right, right. Right, right. And then, you know, there are some projected increases just for on the resource end of things for the upcoming school year. So we'll make some decisions around that. You know, based on the input that we're receiving from the faculty. Um but yeah, I I there were a lot of wonderful things in terms of the online resources. That have now become incorporated into practice. Um so that is a bright spot that came through um this remote learning experience.
So as you can see, you know, one of um in in as an area, the total technology budget, we are from a budgetary standpoint. Showing about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of increase in that area. Um but again, we do get a good amount amount of that back in in state aid. Um transportation. So again, transportation similar. To as Joe had mentioned, transportation is a bit challenging to uh project. Um for variety reasons, because one or two children that either go out of district can can significantly impact this um the overall budget. So again, these are some considerations when developing the budget. Um as we've all seen, you know, the gas the gas prices are are continued to creep up, that has a direct, obviously huge impact on when you're running school bus. Because it's a, it's it's uh when it's like this year, when it was on the lower side, it was wonderful, you know, soft cost savings, but. You know, we're projecting right now for a budget that has to cover the next fifteen months, right? Because it's, you know, covering from July on. So again, that that's a consideration. Again, as I mentioned, really the largest one is uh when ours are students that either are placed by us or placed by their. Parents in and out of district placement. And for um for private school students with non-IEPs, we have to transport it to fifteen miles. For for children with IEPs, that goes up to fifty miles. So again, there's times if you have to roll uh one bus, if we place the child somewhere, I mean, that that's a big variable. Could be about eighty to ninety thousand dollar change. Um again, the the application process. And it's hard because I know parents don't always have the information they need, but they, it is kind of late and it doesn't, you know, coincide great with our budget. But but I we understand why that that date is what it is. Um and again, we are in a consortium. So the other kind of really challenging piece of it is. Um we we share busing with um now we're actually sharing with another four districts and uh and then occasionally with another fifth. But if one of the districts pulls out or not pulls out, has less children riding on a bus that I'm, we may be sharing this year. Just by the reduction or graduation of their students, the my incre- the incremental cost for Hastings, we pick up the the rest of the share of that share route. So again. You know, we try to to speak a lot and get a good understanding of that, but they they sometimes don't know if children are not going to be there like us. So um although, you know, we are projecting, as you can see, your reduction. And and we really have worked really hard. I mean, this busing, if you look over historically, not only budget on actuals. We continue to reduce this um year over year and it really, the consortium, especially with the addition of another um district last year has really. I mean, it has extended some of the routes, but it really has helped us um in cost savings. And again, we're continuing to project. To be more as efficient as possible. Um this year, we are projecting uh an increase toward in district. Um the the actual for this year. Is going to even be higher than three hundred because of the way we ran the hybrid runs, but um the cost of that contract, we we think it may be slightly up next year. And again, right now, we're holding steady on four buses, but if we ever needed to add another bus run, um you know, that that also. You know, has to be considered here. And again, we're, this is based on actual, we're looking at the sports, we, the last few years, as Drew had mentioned, I think there's been some alignment amongst. Um you know, and a working relationship with Bosse's that's helped us save a couple bucks on um some of that sports busing. So we're um projecting. Even with some of those increases, I I um lined up forever, we we still, I feel comfortable projecting a reduction in this budget area. And this is how it kind of lays out again, you know, we're seeing the the largest piece of that reduction is being driven by our added district consortium and. Our our partners in the quad, um really, I I think I've done a great job in in really finding ways um to provide. Also, we want to keep the the experience for our children, not, you know, to be good, but again, but also um making it, um you know, saving money where they can. Employed benefits. Um okay, so again, another large, large piece of our budget, and as I had mentioned. Each budget category, we we budgeted and um put it under a category which we're required to do. And again. Uh employee benefits fall under a portion of the budget that's called undistributed expenses and. This is though, this reflects all of our employees, uh the benefit costs related for all of our employee groups. So. The first line here we have is non-teacher retirement. Again, it is what um it says, it's for any any person that is not administrator. Or a teacher that works in the school district. What we have seen the last few years is that the retirement system, and again, it's based on their performance. And they project out using a five-year average on the performance of the fund itself. And in New York State, I mean, it is a good thing they're fully funded, they're funded at almost very, very close to a hundred percent, which is not the case in all of the states. So. They they um in in doing, making sure that they're fully funded, uh when they're, they they always uh project the rate to to ensure that it remains that way. And this again is based upon, it is driven, of course, if our employees make more money, that's one part of of what would increase this cost. And then the other por- portion of that is the um rate in which um the employee retirement systems tell us that. They need to charge us to to make sure the the fund is fully funded. So again. Um this is based on what we're being told by New York State and we're anticipating an increase of about a hundred thousand for non-teacher retirement. Um as well as an increase of about a hundred and sixty-seven for our teacher retirement contribution for next year. Uh social security again, or uh this, the budget to budget's only go up twenty-one thousand, the actual is probably going up about a hundred and. Fifty thousand, because again, we had a, we did have a couple extra dollars in there this year. Um uh workers' compensation, again, this is bait. We're on a consortium, it's a large number, but actually the consortium is uh much cheaper. Some districts are not in a consortium. And I can tell you even districts of our size, this number could be triple that. Um we, it it gives us protection, we participate with about another thirty districts. In Westchester County and uh this, the rate is driven by both experience ratings as well as payrolls. Uh life insurance, we don't anticipate an increase there. Unemployment, um you know, unemployment, as we know, we. If we, we've hired a lot of people this year, if we don't need to keep them on, we're going to experience an increase in our unemployment. Uh if they if they do not find another position. So we we do have to, it it may be more than that. We actually. Um pay direct benefits. So I mean, unemployment pays now, we have to pay whatever they're paid from unemployment. So. Um currently, I believe this year, we're tracking about even about seventy-five thousand in in that line item. So we're we're hoping um it it levels off next year. Um the other area here, we're anticipating an increase is our health insurance. I think I mentioned that earlier, our consortium. We're also in a consortium for health insurance. Um it is a large number, it includes about one point five million or so. Of this is just for our retirees who already, you know, have left the district and the rest uh of the expenses for current employees. Who per- who choose to participate in our health insurance uh plan. And as I mentioned before, well, again, this is a net increase because we do have. We had a couple extra dollars in there and so this is what our actual increase in costs will be for us next year, about two hundred one thousand. Again, this is something that is also a tricky thing to budget because I'm budgeting based upon what people's current health insurance needs are this year. If an individual gets married and now they go from having a single plan to a family plan, that has to be made up at in throughout the budget. So. And now that doubles the cost. And again, they would be eligible and and that is um a cost we would bear. So. That that's where sometimes budgeting this off of actual, we do have to consider that people's situations may change. So um you know, I always try to keep my eye on those things. Um the other items um in terms of the welfare fund and and um for both, that's for dental and optical benefits for all employees. And again, the increases, they're really just reflective of the um level of participation. So. They have, um well, the CSEA one is based on individual uh how many people they have in um how many staff members. And then that that's how we calculate that amount and we do have a higher level CSEA staff members, particularly where, as I mentioned, we are. We didn't reduce some of our uh teacher assistants or also projecting to hire more teacher aid. So. That's really the increase there is reflective of that additional staff and similar with HTA. And um so that category, you can see just in this one area in which we're about a half a million up year over year. Uh debt service. So again, this is another area that does fall under undistributed, it's an un- part of the undistributed budget, but it's specifically debt service and and it is what it says. It's the uh uh debt obligations of the district. Um and obviously, we have an existing bond from our two thousand fourteen project and you can see the principal and the interest payment. That are due next year for that uh that project. And you'll see the first year of expense related to our new. Uh bond for the uh work that has been actually ongoing for about a year now and it includes the Hillside Edition, the roofing at both buildings. Um renovation of auditorium, um renovation of music suites and and as and the new boiler that Joe had mentioned earlier in his presentation. And and some other odds and ends that were also uh infrastructure kind of work. So the good news is that the interest rates being historically low. We were able to borrow fifteen million dollars um on a van and only pay twenty-seven thousand dollars with the interest. So. That was good um in terms of our budget for next year. So that that is reflecting um that that borrowing of those funds. Um the other amounts, we're just seeing a small uh principal, this had to do with a uh a principal settlement agreement on a energy performance. Uh sorry, a purchase agreement that we have and is a slight, it's actually flat, it's just a flip-flop of uh interest and principal on that. And then again, um Joe, Joe, if you're on, can you just briefly, the capital fund, just to remind everyone, there's a certain dollar amount that. Each district um puts puts to the side each year to address like some ongoing items. So um things that we don't want to wait for a bond or don't feel we can wait for a bond. And um I'm sure Joe would love to have more than that, but you know, we try to put about a hundred thousand each year. You know, to address certain projects and Joe can kind of give you what he anticipates um to spend that on this year.
Sure, Maureen. So um we're going to continue to replace uh classroom doors. Um in in both schools, Hillside and Farragut Complex. Um also real important, which we haven't done in several years, is duck cleaning. We're going to have a duck cleaner come in over the summer and clean all the duck work throughout the district. And then we still have uh communication systems in the middle school that um we upgraded last year in the high school. That we'll do a little piecemeal on that and try and get some of that done um to bring the the middle school up to up to par with that. And uh whatever we have left, and we'd like to do some sidewalks. We have about two hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalks to do around the district. Um so we're looking maybe to take chunks of that and and do uh little pieces here and there.
Thank you, Joe. And again, the special aid fund, that's the, again, the way, the way at the budget certain things. This is actually the portion the district um is required to fund for our special education students to attend mandated summer programs. Eighty percent of, currently eighty percent of that is funded by the state, although we have to pay it and then, you know, seek reimbursement. But we have an obligation to pay twenty percent of that and that needs to be budgeted in this category. And again, the five thousand is a reduction as much as it's it's uh tying us more to what our actuals had been this year and we feel. Based on the children that they anticipate going out, that that um that that number is sufficient. So um all all the different things that we've spoken about over the last two budget meetings, that is pretty much, you know, when we walk through. How we're coming up with that one point eight million dollar year-over-year increase. So. Um you know, this is again, just important dates to remember and we can take questions and if you need me to flip back. To a certain slide, if you'd like me to, I can do that as well.
Thank you, Maureen and Joe and Melissa and Jeanette and Drew. This is really comprehensive overview of this area of the budget. I'm going to open it to any trustees. Who would like to um comment or ask any questions.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. This is super helpful. To see all the details. Can you um, Maureen, just go over one more time? I I wasn't clear on your explanation for the uh forty-four percent increase in the special ed. TAs. I just, I think you had an explanation, I just.
Yeah, yeah, see, what has, so again, you know, what happens is we establish the budget at a time, but but things may change after, right? So what's sometimes challenging is when we're presenting the budget, there's the proposed budget last year, what actually happened and what we're projecting for next year. And what I was, um what what I was trying to explain is although we initially had thought or hoped in the development of last year's budget. That we would either share some of our TAs um across grade levels, I think especially with the pandemic, it just became, it it just wasn't going to happen. We need our TAs to help with remote learning. So what I'm suggesting is that we never made that reduction. We're not proposing to make that reduction next year. So it's actually not increasing the number of teacher assistants we currently have. Rather, the budget is now being corrected to reflect what actually is occurring this year. Does that make sense?
So that, so if we went back two years, does that?
We had a reduction year over year.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, the number may have changed also Doug, because you know, the number is driven sometimes on the amount of ICT class. I mean, there are sometimes you could have changed slightly, but. The original, when that budget was put together last year, we had um calculated a reduction in teacher assistance. So. That actual budget line now kind of reflects what they're, you know, what we anticipate, we're gonna, you know, the teacher, amount of teacher assistance we're gonna have for next year.
Okay, okay. Um the and does that re- result in a in a reduction on a different line item or it's just, it's it's more what we actually spent would.
We actually spend, yeah. And sometimes when there's monies, I mean, that's uh maybe even more confusing, but occasionally you'll see where actually if we get. Special education also gets like six eleven and some other, it's it's specific grants and and occasionally when there's money available in those grants, we sometimes can fund physicians out of there. But if those funds run out, then we have to, you know, put it in our regular budget. So, you know, it it's really, we haven't increased this, I think, as teacher assistance is just. Sometimes how the funding mechanism or, you know, we, I think we initially had anticipated reducing it and it just, um. I think it was a combination, we just needed more and it just wasn't, you know, possible. And I think sometimes too, Doug, you'll see a flip-flop. A child could have a teacher aide on their IP and then it'd be switched to a teacher assistant. So it's really a foot, there is a little bit of a flip-flop between those two categories. I believe for maybe two, two of the teacher assistants, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
So there may be like a slight, that's why when I'm saying, yes, we're getting forty ways next year, but the budget does it, if you were to look at it, you wouldn't see it. Because, you know, we're also spending a little bit less than AIDS, but I know that for sure, two of the students, they um have a either a teacher assistant. And that that can happen as well, right? So that would, if there's a change in what that has to say, then we have to kind of move them from teacher aide up to the assistant.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly makes sense. It was just the, it was the, it was the almost doubling that I think was. Uh and then, can you just uh for the board and maybe the public just level set, employee benefits going up five hundred thousand, four point five percent? Just in the grand scheme, historically, where where does that number sit? About the same, lower, higher?
Well, I would say um the last couple of years, it's been, I would say, similar. Um. I, there has been a time, I mean, obviously, although health insurance is always a large driver, of course, of that, because it's a significant amount of our employee benefit cost. I have to say that they've done a fairly good job the last few years in trying to keep, keep the rate as low as possible. I mean, I know three, you could argue three point nine, but in the healthcare world. It is not, it is actually not terrible. So I um but I have seen, just historically, I've seen signs, health insurance rates climb seven. It's like, we've also had that hit, pre-deers, seven or six percent increases in health insurance. But again, I think there's been a real concerted effort to try to rein in um or or share with co-pays and split how they, how they fund. It's a, it's a consortium health insurance fund. Um the other wild driver is of course the retirement system. So. Um there, if you look from a historical perspective, those rates, so currently, the rates are around ten percent or so for the teacher's retirement system. Maybe there there was a time, I mean, in the eighties, which is a long, long time ago, but it was like twenty-five percent. So those rates are really have been pretty up and down. That being said, as as I know the board is aware, the the state has created new tiers and by doing so, that has helped to start stabilizing those rates a bit. I think what we're seeing now is, well, I'm hoping that although they may be similar next year. The more individuals that retire, the new tiers that are part of newer people, the last ten or fifteen years. Entering into the retirement systems, their level of benefits on retirement are vastly different than they were twenty-five years ago, right? So what I think we're seeing now is that although they they have been up a little bit over the last couple of years. Namely, the last five, five to seven years, they've definitely gone, they've been going more like they're. like they're a little bit higher than they had been years before. I do think with the new tiers, five and six, we'll start to see those leveling off, right? So the more people retire, the, the people that are coming in. And then the cost of the district to fund those retirements is significantly different, right? Because the retirement benefits for those individuals, A, they have to work longer. You could say that's a good thing or a bad thing, but you know, they, instead of being able to retire at 55, they have to work to 62 or maybe even possibly older with the, the new tier. And the, the amount of pension they will receive is vastly different. It's a different calculation. So I, I want to kind of give like, I, I think that we'll be seeing that number kind of stabilize, but it may take a couple more years before we see those retirement numbers start to come back down. I will say that there was like, they were at historical lows. And that's when the, that was really because obviously it's also driven, as I mentioned, by the performance of the stock market rates. With the stock market, when it's really up, the contribution level needs to be less because the, the income that's being generated by that, we don't need, you know, that they're making so much more on their investment income that they may not need a larger contribution. So of course that's another large driver. I think that's why I say, I think we just want to be cautious the next few years. But if, you know, that's also a time in which when those rates were up, we still our, our amount we have to pay down significantly. So but it is, it's like every business, I think, you know, employee benefits are a large expense and a large cost. Healthcare is always going to be one of those. And I think we, we do, we do try again, as part of the consortium, I know it's a very good plan and, and, you know, we're happy that our employees have a good plan. We have looked, I had done a, I mean, it was a little bit of a while ago, maybe now seven or eight years ago. I did an RFP and brought in all different health insurance companies to see if there was a better alternative. And really at that time, even though we have a very good plan, the, the, the way the consortium would run, it's actually, it would have cost us more to replace the plan for our employees. So I think as long as our consortium and we're all looking to partner and, and make sure that the plan is solvent and that, you know, we're able to afford to continue to participate in it.
Good. Thanks, Maureen.
Welcome.
Maureen, I'm going to jump in there. We did a, we had a really easy financing, the 27,000 for the ban. If next year, if we're paying that, what do you expect next year's payment to be? What's a, what's, what does it cost every year to try to pay off a $15 million? Obviously it'll go up next year if we're not banning it again. What, what would you, if you roundballed it and you could be off by a hundred grand, I'm not trying to
Remember, well, I think the debt schedule, I recalibrated. I mean, it's a really depends. I think next year because of our borrowing, you know, we, we didn't, we just recently borrowed that money. So next fiscal year, 2023, right? We would likely only, we wouldn't probably have a principal payment, Jeremy, because it, it, we didn't borrow it to kind of later in the year. So we were probably the first year, the first year would be less and it would be more than 27,000, probably be
So how about the first?
I would say maybe like, you know, maybe $250,000 or 300, maybe for if we just did like a half year interest payment or something.
And how much, how about the first year where we are paying principal and interest? What should we expect that number to go up?
I think it's going to be close to a million.
It's going to be close to a, a million dollar increase.
Now, the one thing that, that one of the reasons we want to be careful how we structure it is on the other side, once we finalize our construction, I mean finalize the work and you get, and we do our final submissions to the state. That's when that, the state aid for that project will start kicking in. So we really are trying to align our debt for when we have that, say, 800, $900,000 larger payment coming on the books. We anticipate that having about 450,000 of revenue coming in on the other side to offset that. So the, you know, we're hoping to, you know, that's why the alignment of those two things are really important too. Cause that helps, you know, also it's like a net to our tax rate, right? But you're right, we do, we do have to think about that as, you know, coming on and, and as we look and we'll see what the rates are next year, of course. And you know, if it's a real advantageous rate, we're going to want to lock into a bond. But I think part of the reason schools do bans also is to allow for that timing of that state aid to align with the larger debt payments do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was easy.
I, I just want to comment that I think it's a real win for the community that we're able to restore the theater spending. I know that the middle school plays in the way things played out this year. Of course it was even different with COVID, but you know, at this time last year, when we were discussing this school year's budget, we had to make some accommodations and reduce that. So I'm really pleased that that was something that we were able to restore. I just had a question regarding the nursing staff and we, we weren't, you, when you pulled it up, it looked like there is a reduction. And I just want to have a speak and you did mention that there is a sense of caution in terms of, you know, if, if the district does want or need to have surveillance testing for COVID-19 in the 21, 22 school year, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of that line item should we need to do that. So we're not patching in part-time or contracted work to get that done.
Yeah, I mean, currently I am, I mean, we are anticipating using some additional resources, although they are, they're like part-time for GM people for, they, for us. They're not really like unknowns, like we do have a kind of a group of, of people actually, our nurses have worked with and they're actually working, doing this in hospitals. So it, you know, we, we do have an aligned item for that. And I think some of those nurses will be helping us this year in those efforts. So I think if, if it's working well, then, then we can, you know, continue with that practice. Again, working of, of course alongside with our nurses. But it was when we put together the budget, but really had we included that, we would have had, it's about, you know, it's, it's a few hundred thousand dollars we would have to add to the budget. Like if we were to keep to our current additional, two additional nurses for salary and benefits. So we did put a couple of dollars, but you're right, we, we just, you know, we just have to understand that that, you know, got, you know, if there's a need for anything additional, it's going to have to come from somewhere else.
Yes. We're hoping that the tests remain free of cost to us too.
Well, that's
So for now that are free, that's the Binex now Abbott testing. So there could be a different story in the fall.
That's true. I didn't, yeah, we don't, and we don't, as Valerie mentioned out, that's something as we're learning and you know, when we really received a certain amount. So like, and I know we're maybe getting a few more, but if they're not free, that, that, that could be a significant expense as well then. And that's why I think the budget, I think, you know, before the board adopts it, you know, there could be a couple of tweaks here and there if we learn more of either on the funding side of things. I, I think, you know, we, we're trying to be cautious, but we're also, you know, try to balance that with also restorations of things where we can. So if we do learn of needing to pay for tests or something, we may, it may be smart to maybe try to figure out, you know, a little bit of monies, especially if we get some additional revenues that we can can put aside for that, that purpose.
Thank you, Maureen and Valerie. Were there any other questions or comments for Maureen or any of the other budget managers that helped present this evening?
Yes, I have other comments, but I want to see if I can go after other people speak again.
It seems you can go ahead, Jeremy Gallant.
All right. I'm talking too much again. Here we go. Straight off, guys, the, the presenters, oh, I think four of you I'm staring at right now. They were all fabulous, clear and helpful. So none of the criticism or my negative questioning here is directed towards what we're doing here. I don't see other board members who share my concerns. So in that sense, the budget is full stream ahead. I think you're following the right, you're hearing and following the right voices from residents, administrators and board members. If others do share a concern, I hope we speak up because the budget is moving forward. I don't think 4% increases are appropriate for this village. And if that was a concern that other people shared, then we would approach these choices differently. We cannot just keep saying yes to everything. We want to restore what was cut before. We want to increase teacher aides, teaching assistant salaries are going up. But if, if it's another five to one vote where you guys are okay with 4% increases, we're at 3.6 now and there's more coming. I think that's the direction that people are hearing and in which case that presentation is fabulous. Everyone, Jeanette, Andrew, Joe, Maureen, the presentation is perfect. You're laying everything out there for people to see. I don't see how that represents what our town needs. Employee benefits going to go up $500,000 a year. We're going to start paying a million on this bond, which Maureen explained, that's only going to cost us about half of it. That line item is going up another 500,000. Eighty percent of our budget is teacher salaries. Every time a teacher gets a step up every year, that's a 3% increase. So I understand we are a majority driven board here, but I don't want to nitpick on small items. If if the majority is okay with 4%, then it doesn't matter that I mean, pick one, Gravity Goldberg, the literacy program, I mean, we can cut it completely, save $35,000. But it's not worth nitpicking. If, if you guys think 3.6% increases are appropriate for this town with an obvious increases coming down the road, then that's where we're going. And I believe we're heading towards just runaway budgets. I don't like hearing we're tax cap compliant. That's not the goal. We could be doing better. We can do lower. We have residents who are financially stressed. But I appreciate that presentation. It was clear to the point and excellent. And our town has decisions to make. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for showing it to us early so we could look at it, of course.
Yeah. And, and I think Jeremy, listen, we, we put together a budget. I, we definitely think, you know, as Valerie and I try to do when we talk about our, when we do the budget 101s, you know, we, like it is, you, you are always looking at that five year, you know, growth. And, and I do think it is a piece of the, you know, we didn't share it tonight. We didn't, we did do that during our five-year projections because I think to your point, you know, you're right, there are things that are wrong, right? Like, you know, you can see the employee benefits as, you know, Doug really was trying to understand, like, you know, where, where do we see that going? You know, what, what is this kind of the average, you know, is this going to keep? I think, you know, it is, and I, I appreciate the tax, I mean, the, the, but you're right, that the expense part of our budget is growing close to 4%. Although the tax rate implication for next year, I would agree, that's not a guarantee for the, you know, yours out is actually one, whatever, 1.4% next year. But, but I do think, you know, next time when, you know, we can definitely bring back and just have a, just a discussion about five-year growth, you know, just, I think it's an important discussion to look at. Although it is hard because things do change year to year also. I think as we've always expressed, you know, a lot of our challenges and not unlike other Westchester districts, or really we so many of the, so much of the funding is from our, our local taxpayers and we really do appreciate that. And Valerie and I really, and I, our budget 101s, not to keep going back, we, that is our largest challenge when we're putting together a spending plan. To your point, I mean, and it's something that's really, we do try to, I mean, I know we're still going up by 4%, but you know, we, we do look at that and the sustainability of that, of course, is always in, on our minds as well. So I definitely appreciate your comments to that point. And I think, you know, we can definitely talk about that as a group if people think it's helpful. But, but I, it's just hard because we don't, as we know, when we, we don't get a lot of state aid. And you know, if there is ever, I don't know if there will be, but if there even was a slight or some type of consistent increase or some sort in that, that would go a long way, way for us. But that, that's one of the things I think has been our, our very, very challenging part of our budget.
No, thank, I, and I don't want this to come across sarcastic at all. I think you are reading the room correctly. You know, I think you're presenting it clearly and you're not hearing any pushback. So I think you're reading, you're reading the town and the board members that are represented by the town correctly. I just see $2 million increases and we're funding it this year by going into our reserves. And I know you've explained so many things, it's not easy to compare it to previous years. So I think you're reading the room correctly and you're, you're working based on what the, the priorities of this board is saying and the administration and the residents and your own experiences. I think you're reading it very correctly and I hope that's not coming across as, you know, insincere or sarcastic. I am reading it very differently. We are funding increases based on our capital reserves entering uncertain times. And I will be possibly, you know, this is not what my priorities would be. So nothing to criticize. This is not a budget that I would be supporting. But nothing to criticize unless people jump in and give you a different direction. Unless you hear a different direction on, this is not going to be acceptable. So we got to look at each other, each items differently. But I think you're reading, I think you're reading the temperature correctly, Maureen.
What, what I'll say is one, we have been funding the budgets through reserves and, and and unfortunately it, it's kind of, I, I think in many ways, sort of not sustainable, but in many other ways, there's, there's not a lot of other ways to do it. I mean, I've looked into, you know, could we raise an endowment fund from wealthy individuals to, to plug in pieces of, of the budget? People don't want to, people don't want to spend money on, on, you know, charitable donation, large charitable donation to, to a wealthy district school. You know, the, the reality is that we had really tough cuts last year. I'm really proud of the fact that Maureen, you and Valerie and everyone else who's on this call was able to find ways to bring back that science position, to bring back some of the other positions that we said last year, we were hoping to, to bring back. And, and it's great to me that, that we're able to bring those back because we heard from a lot of residents that students were impacted by the fact that there weren't as many electives, there weren't as many choices or weren't as many options. And so the reality of the budget is that if you want the students to have the breadth of electives that, that they have in Hastings, then it's almost impossible to come up with a budget that doesn't have costs that go up by two to 4%. It just is not possible unless there's a, a pot of money that's, that's sort of, you know, drops in our lap. And the alternative ways to find that revenue I've looked into and I, I was not able to figure out, you know, where, where to find those dollars. If you have a, an answer to that, Jeremy, you know, I'd love to hear about it. But it's pretty clear to me that people who have students in the schools want to have the services and the electives and the, and the different offerings. People that don't have students in the schools, they want to cut things that you know, there's, you know, either the people who love music want or people who need the, you know, the services that Gravity Goldberg's training has, has enabled. So I am supportive of, of, of the budget that, that you guys have laid out. I think that especially in, in areas like science and high school, I think that students were impacted, that will continue to be impacted if, if we don't, you know, bring back the cuts that, that we made. And, and we never wanted to make as many cuts as we did last year. It was, it was a really bad year. So you know, I, I think that, that's the struggle for this district and every other district is that it's one thing to say, you know, I don't want to see 4%, let's cut this, let's cut that. It's not really a matter of, you know, let's cut things because we are pretty cut to the bone. Maureen does a really good job of, of cutting the necessities. You know, whatever you, one person thinks should be cut, there's eight million other people that think that it should stay. It's a matter of can we find ancillary revenue streams? Can we find alternate revenue sources? And that's always been the issue. And that's always been the issue. I, I have not heard any solutions from any person that I've talked to about where to find ancillary revenue streams. And like I said, I looked into, could we raise money from high net worth individuals? Some people in town, you know, have plenty of money to, 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 you know, cut into some of the, the, the budget deficit. People don't wanna give their money to a, to, to a wealthy school district. It's not where they wanna put their money. So I, I'm supportive of, of what's been laid out.
Well, certainly tonight, we don't have to make any type of decision. You know, Maureen gave the timeline for the, the final presentation and, and voting and, but certainly, you know, hearing people's perspectives on how things are going so far is, is helpful. You know, I, I particularly noticed that the effort that Drew Wendell went through, his department was able to make significant cuts to things and find other cost savings. And certainly there have been cost savings in different areas and reallocation and redistribution of, of funding as well. And what, you know, what I think, what I think I, I heard was that this notion that this budget isn't what this town needs. And what I'm hearing from the administration and the, the budget presenters is that they think this is what our students and educators need. And in, in that service, it serves the town by providing the type of educational quality experience that Hastings deserves. So certainly, I'm, I'm in favor of the direction this budget is going in. But certainly, you know, the trustees each have copies of this presentation and it certainly should dialogue with Maureen and Valerie about any areas where you see some cost savings that or reallocation that you feel is significant. And this is the time to really spend time doing that on your own and circling back to the administration. So I encourage each of the trustees to do that. So that when we come back together at the April seventh meeting, you can have some real questions or Maureen can provide some real data to answer the type of questions you have.
The only thing I will leave you with when you talk about, I mean, the boards are where that we are looking at a potential solar kind of rental thing. So if, if that was something that I can kind of solidify, you know, it was too early for us to, and we're just talking about alternative revenue streams. So we are, we do, we do go after things that may produce like long-term. Again, it's maybe not as, I mean, it's actually fairly significant in terms of, you know, available other revenues. So if, if we're able to get that in place, you know, before the budget, that is something that you'll see reflected in a revised budget. But, but as you said, Jeremy, Arnon, it's that, that is the challenge is the revenue side of things. But you know, when, when things are, when we do, you know, like that's an example of something. And what's nice about that is it's also something that's a consistent revenue stream, right? It's not something that's like a one-year, you know, sometimes people have ideas, but they're not, they may only do something for you for one year. You know, entering into this potential solar agreement will not only be good for our town in terms of, you know, providing solar energy back to our residents, but does actually provide the type of revenue stream over a long period of time that is important to, you know, you want something that's recurring, not, not one-offs. Because that, that's, anything that's one-off, you can't really build a budget on. So, but, but yeah, so we were happy, we're, we're hoping that that we can have that finalized. And then if that is the case, then we will revise that, just that revenue line item in our budget.
Thanks, Maureen. So again, I encourage the trustees to spend time reviewing the presentation and the one that was also shared with us last week, so that if you have further suggestions or comments regarding areas of expense that you want fleshed out more, that there's opportunity to do that. And I wanna say, yes, go ahead, Doug.
I mean, I think it's important that we really reflect on what our role as a board is. And, and our role as a board is to put together a budget that reflects the values and desires of our community, which includes everyone, right? It includes the teachers, I mean, includes, excuse me, the, the, the parents, it includes people who have kids, people who don't have kids. And, you know, a, a budget should reflect the values and the strategy of the community. You know, full stop. I mean, that, that's it. And to the degree that, you know, Jeremy is discussing, Jeremy Gallant is discussing some thoughts that are out there that aren't being reflected in this budget. And to the degree that that body of, that, that voice of people represents a very large group and potentially a majority, he's right that it has to be reflected. And to the degree that others feel as though there's things that they want to invest in that will reflect a variety of different ways that we have to come up with revenue for it, be it through tax base, be it through, you know, I mean, that, that's kind of really it, right? But this year we have an extra seven hundred thousand dollars back. It's not really extra. We got it restored from, and so that's one reason why this year's budget looks a little bit different. But, you know, there's a world in which, you know, Jeremy's right, we've got three to four percent that's going up on a yearly basis. And I think as a community, we have to, you know, that's why people show up at the polls and they vote, because they say, yes, I'm for it or I'm not. And that's, that's really the end of it. And I mean, the one thing I will say is, if there are things, so much of that's in this budget right now is reflective of kind of hard-fought dialogues and conversations over the years that represent the values of this town. You know, these are not just six hundred and whatever, forty-two line items that popped up this year. These are, these are historical dialogues that go back year after year after year after year. To Jeremy's point, sometimes those are, you know, a decade old and haven't been questioned. To disagree that those are in our budget, we should look at them and we should change them potentially. But we have to figure out what those are. I think what's really hard is to, is to, is to say to the administration, just get this money out. I think what's better is, as Lauren, as you were just alluding to, is figuring out where are the target items? Where are the, is it in the salaries? Is it in the benefits are a little harder, obviously. Is it in the way that we approach different departments? Is it in the way that we approach electives? Is it in the way that we approach a variety of things? We've got to figure out where those values are, and we've got to come back with those real discussion points, saying, yeah, we can do it. We can get an extra five hundred grand out. We can get an extra whatever. Here's how we would do it. And, and, you know, the board has to have those conversations and say, you know, and I'm up for that. I think we should put that to a vote. And at that point, I'm sure a lot of people in the town are gonna have a lot of strong opinions about it. But I think we have to really think about this as, as a full dialogue with the town. These are, these are getting harder and harder budgets. Post-two thousand nine, these budgets got a lot harder after the stock market didn't just keep going up and up and up, and everything felt like free money. So these are hard conversations and I hope we can find some very specific places within which to really look if, if we wanna, you know, make some of those values calls.
Doug, thanks for phrasing it that way and saying it that way. My concern, guys, is that we are supposed to be having our discussions in public. And I think Maureen has brought budgets to us and she's reading the temperature correctly. She's saying, what do you guys think about this? And she's not hearing, she's hearing a majority people saying they love it, they like it. They like the seventh teacher being added to kindergarten. You know, it's sometimes Jeremy, Jeremy the first or the other Jeremy. You know, if it's not revenue, then you gotta cut back on expenses, you know, if we're not getting revenue from Mr. Broadway. Then you discuss, okay, are we adding a hundred fifty grand here? I'm not gonna nitpick this budget, guys. Maureen has brought it to us clearly. Valerie has brought it to us clearly, and the presenters tonight are fabulous. If she's reading five yeses, six yeses, then keep going. But we're supposed to have a discussion in public, not, you know, any other way. And I don't think we've ever established what our target is. So we're starting the budget thing. I don't wanna do it individually. We have no role individually. I would never write to Maureen. Obviously, Valerie, you know, I'm writing only to you and asking you to forward it to Maureen, C.C. Maureen. But I'm not, that's not my role. I can't, I can't be saying, you know, I'm curious about this item. We are a majority entity, so if no one's giving a target here, I think they're reading the temperature correctly. Is the target to be tax cap compliant? And to shoot, you know, a little bit under four percent? Otherwise, we should have discussion. Is the target to be at one and a half percent growth right now? And if it's not, I have no problems, guys. There are seven people on this board. I know, I don't have a role as an individual unless we're having a discussion.
Well, I meant to say that if you had questions, that you could let Maureen know in advance how you would like to discuss them at our next budget meeting, which is April seventh, which is set aside as a discussion evening. So that, that was my intent to describe to you, Jeremy, so that she has an outline of, in advance points that she would like to work through with us. So you could certainly copy us all and, and so that Maureen could be prepared, but we certainly would have that discussion in person on April seventh.
I understand. I think our, our target should be about a one and a half percent increase. I think every time we add a teacher position, add a teacher aid, we're never getting it out. I don't wanna cut positions. I just don't wanna be adding positions. But if I'm the only voice, then you, you gotta go with the other elected people out here. You gotta go with the higher numbers, if that's what the majority rules.
I, I think some of us just aren't jumping in, JG, because of what Doug and Jeremy and Lauren outlined. I, I think most of us would love to have a lower increase. And we're always looking for that. But now that this has all been presented, I think everybody wants to kind of go back, look, look through it once again, digest it a little, because it's a lot of information. And then come back and maybe understand some of the, the line items a little better, but, and also look in the ways of, you know, does it, is it best for the district to have a seventh section? Is it not? You know, I think those are fair discussions and things that I'm imagining others are open to having. I wouldn't take our silence right now to mean, hey, this was exactly what everybody wants to see. It's more of, let's absorb it. And then come back with some more questions and dialogue. And I, I think Maureen knows that from previous experience, that there, there's always some, some more questions that develop after these presentations.
It's a, you know, fifty million-plus spending plan, you know, if, it, it does take time and the board has the time up until the time you adopt the budget. And it's not unusual to have further discussions and request more information, more dialogue. And it is, it is important that, you know, that, that that happens. And I expect it to happen. So I, I think as, you know, we'll have that other dates and if there needs to be additional times that the board wants to add, that's fine as well. So.
And to your point, JG, it is, it's a conversation that gets kicked down. It's like a can that gets kicked down the road every year with regards to the strategy. I mean, you're not wrong. And Maureen and I talk about this all the time. So it does require, you know, at some point that there is a strategy that's developed that does address, you know, how do we, you know, keep costs down? And then in doing so, what are the decisions that need to be made throughout the budget, you know, to make that take place, you know? So it's a tough conversation, but it has to start. And, you know, clearly what we know is the strategy used last year, you know, this sort of balancing the budget by cutting things is not, you know, a, you know, is not a sustainable strategy. Nor is taking from fund balance a sustainable strategy. So there, it is important in the next conversation, you know, for this conversation, I mean, in, in the next board meeting for the conversation to take place, because you'll always end up back in this place without a strategy around how to move forward. Because what we do know is that Albany isn't inclined to provide more, you know, funding. They're just not, it's not going to happen. You know, and if anything, it's tied to our, you know, our wealth ratio, which means we don't get much. So I think, you know, some, there has to be some sense of what, you know, how do you proceed? Because in the service industry, as we know, costs are still, are going to continue to increase. You know, they, they're not going to decre, decrease. And so I think it'll be very helpful to have that conversation at the next board meeting, or started at the next board meeting.
And I think this is also just the first time that the conversation is initiated, not only for us as a Board of Education and its membership, but also for the community. So for those folks who are tuning in, we're similarly gonna be hearing about what their priorities are. You know, understanding that this is just the outset of the, of the conversation. This is in no way, you know, anybody giving an endorsement to what has been put forth, but trying to understand so that we have better questions. And honestly, a lot of those questions come up during the context of our conversation tonight. You know, you think about things more deeply and you realize what is it that I need to understand in a more fleshed-out way when we, you know, reassemble in a couple of weeks? So you know, the way that I see it is listen and learn, try and figure out what I don't understand and, you know, know what it is I need to suss out before we can decide what it is we're gonna adopt on April twentieth, because it, you know, it's a lot of minutia, you know? And for those of us who don't deal with budgets every day, you have to pore over the information a few times before you really know what it is you're signing on to, to adopt on behalf of the entire community.
Well, thank you, Maureen and Valerie, and the budget presenters. We look forward to spending more time with this and coming back for more discussion on April seventh regarding the budget. We can move on to our business items.
Thank you, budget managers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We can move on to the business items. There are nine listed. Are there any comments or questions from trustees regarding these nine business items? Is there a motion to approve business items one through nine? I see Jody moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'll move on to appointments. There are four appointments listed. Are there any questions or comments regarding these appointments? Is there a motion to approve appointments one through four?
Yes, so moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're moving on to leaves of absence. There are four leaves listed. Are there any questions or comments regarding these leaves of absence? Is there a motion to approve leaves of absence one through four?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have one resignation. Are there any questions or comments regarding this resignation? Is there a motion to approve this resignation? Jody moved. Is there a second? All in favor? I'll move on to retirements. There are three retirements listed, and I do want to comment, as was announced last week, at the end of this extraordinary school year, Dr. Henning Piedmont will be retiring. I've commented in other venues and to anyone who inquires of me that Valerie has not only kept the ship of this district afloat in the most unpredictable and turbulent of waters, but she's kept it afloat and moving forward. And that's been no small feat. Valerie's had a long, impressive career in many schools and districts, and Hastings has had her relentless caring focus and Hastings has had her relentless caring focus on our students since 2019 and through the continuously shifting landscape of schooling through COVID-19. I wish her well in this transition to retirement and appreciate all the steadfast work she has done for the district. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding these retirements?
I'd like to say something. Paul, but first about Valerie. I truly appreciate the level of energy and focus that Valerie has brought to our district. I think in many ways, she has really raised the bar from a professionalism perspective, from an energy perspective, from a sheer ability to really focus a lot of really disparate, challenging tasks and focus in arguably the hardest set of situations that any of us have ever encountered in our lives. And that is, I think for many of us, we can't even imagine how exhausting this year, in the past, in many ways, a year and a half, but year, feels like year and a half. It's really only been, 13 months have been. And, you know, Valerie, I want to say to you that the way that you've conducted yourself and really focused us as a board and focused the, the district is deeply appreciated. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your, for your energy and your effort for your leadership over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I'll just jump in. I want to echo both those thoughts. Sad to see you go. I was, I've told you before that I was hoping you'd be here for 10 years, but you kind of were here for 10 years. It's a long two years in terms of the pandemic. But I really appreciate everything you brought to the district. And I think there'd be a lasting impact with, with some of the positive changes that you made that, that were outlined in the, the letter to the community. And, you know, I think that, yeah, I just want to sort of echo the sentiments and say thanks for everything that, that you did. And, and you still be here for another couple of months. So I'm sure the community will be able to thank you as, as they see you in the schools as well.
Valerie, I just want to say a little bit that certainly not easy to come to this district. And I think everybody knows that. You knew that when you came. And I think none of us ever could have imagined a school year like this. I don't think ever in your wildest dreams did you think you'd ever have to steer a ship through COVID. And I know you've put your heart and your soul and a lot of time and energy into it. And I really thank you for that.
Valerie, I just want to say that you have an incomparable work ethic, that your attention to detail and your command of the minutia of an adapting landscape with bureaucratic shifts, you know, charging at you. The way that you opened up new channels of communication to, you know, from the daily to having a public relations person, really hiring some key staff. I know that you have worked hard every single day in so many unseen ways to improve our schools and to serve all our students. And I can't express how proud I am that the leadership of our district rests in the hands of somebody as dynamic as you. And I just want to say that I say that to you as a fellow woman of color. I thank you as a mother and I thank you as a board member for all the positive impacts that you've made. And I know that you'll continue to make until the end of your time in Hastings. So thank you very, very much.
I can't say it better than that, but I, I did notice that people are using words about, I don't know, the sea, you know, navigating and steadfast and, and steering the ship. And that really has been what it's, it has felt like, you know, things being very, just topsy-turvy from this whole pandemic. And I really believe that it was, as Sylvia said, there were so many pieces and that people really don't have any, any idea of the number of hours that you put in to even understand how to put together all those disparate pieces and present them and keep the schools open as much as possible and deal with all the different voices coming in this time. It was really just an incredible feat. And I'm very grateful that we had you there as somebody who really was ready to give your all, your energy and your intellect in order to keep us afloat. And you did that. So thank you. And more than a float.
Yes, retiring after three decades in education. I just want to make sure everyone knows it wasn't one year. This was two extraordinary years. Both of your years at the end of your career here were extraordinary and they were, they were extraordinary. They were not the way anybody would see it. So I think it really caps an amazing three decade career. Our district was led by our administration and our teachers came back and taught. And that's because of a leadership. We saw other cities refuse to come in and teach. We see our city right to our south trying not to come back four days a week. So two extraordinary years after a, a career of three decades. So much to be, much to be admired.
I know it's the board side, but I just want to jump in. Also, thank Valerie, an incredible, I mean, I don't think anyone, there's no one that I've ever, ever in my life have been around that works harder than Valerie at all. There's not a person I can think of. She works tirelessly. I can say on a personal note that she has helped me so, so much tremendously. I think, as you mentioned, just she's put, put things into place. Or the way I do things now, I'm just, you know, there's so many things I've, it's such a short period of time. I think I've learned so much from Valerie's leadership. And, and also as a woman and as a leader and really, it's just really, you know, for somebody, I've been doing it for so long and I feel like I've learned so much in the last, in, in working with Valerie. It's been really incredible. It's been an honor. And, you know, she was, she led us through, I, I can't imagine, like, just, just all, like, it was really incredible to be, be around it. And, you know, she well deserved retirement, I'm sure. Like I gave, Valerie, you have so much more. I, I know you're going to be doing something because she is, she can really do anything. And, you know, I, I really thank her for, you know, being, being here and all she's done, you know, for me personally. Thank you, Valerie.
Valerie, I know that we'll have some time behind the scenes to talk, but I also wanted to publicly recognize and thank you for everything. I know one of the things that was so important to me, both in terms of loving this Hastings community, was loving the opportunity to come and work alongside with someone who is such an amazing curriculum person too. So you don't always find that in terms of a superintendent, someone with a very strong focused lens, not only on all children, but just this incredible brilliance and high level of expertise around putting the dots together and thinking about all of the moving parts, both with curriculum and instruction and also systems. So thank you.
Thank you all for the pleasure of being here. It's been rough, but yeah, we're almost there. So always important to keep the end in mind. So thank you all, and I look forward to the years ahead.
Thank you, Valerie. And I'm sure we'll have opportunity to celebrate all of the district's retirees at the end of this year. And certainly there'll be an opportunity to further recognize Dr. Henning Piedmont. But clearly, your mark has been made and we're appreciative of your work so far and up until the end of June. So with that, is there a motion to approve all three retirements?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Valerie. We have the minutes from the March 10th, 2021 board meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding these minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March 10th, 2021 board meeting?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor? Maureen, we get another show, this time the construction project update.
Yes, and this is very short, but I'll just share with you some progress that's been made in the last week. So I'll share my screen now. And here we go. Okay. So again, there's just two quick slides this evening. Everyone sees my screen, right? We're good with the screen sharing? Okay. So again, this is actually pictures that were taken today on the site. And as you can see, they're continuing to prepare for the foundation that will be in the next, in the next few weeks, they'll start pouring on that. So on the picture on the left, yes, I was just kind of showing again the preparation of the site. And on the right-hand side is, they're called concrete carpenters and they're starting to erect. They, they create the area in which the concrete will ultimately be poured for the foundation. So you can see today they had some residual, some, you know, small pieces of concrete as they were preparing the area that needed to be jackhammered. But they start to erect these different levels of scaffolding and also areas in which the concrete would be poured. So, so that's occurring this week. And just to provide you the update of what we anticipate happening. And again, this is a reminder, we, during the upcoming spring break, will be taking care of the small abatement in room 1, excuse me, 155. That's been posted. And again, very, as required by law, it's a very small amount of abatement that has to occur. So that'll be happening. Again, the concrete subcontractor is expected to mobilize by the end of the month. And as I mentioned, all the work that's happening leading up to that is, is in preparation for that work. Concrete carpenters have begun their work. There was, I believe, about nine, nine people involved in that today onsite, creating the work needed for that foundation. They're going to start putting in the rebar by the end of the week. And again, that, what they're laying out, the carpenters, then allows for the rebar to start being put in. And again, that's the, typically it's steel that is put in that helps reinforce the concrete that would be laid for the foundation. They are planning on pouring what they call a leveling pad. That, again, it's a site prep work that'll prepare, again, in preparation for ultimately that, that foundation, which is obviously a very huge step in, in, you know, starting the build of that building. And again, the hundreds of submittals are being put in each week by all of our five primes. And they're continuing to be vetted and approved. And, and just so you know, in terms of submittals, that can range from a, a large piece of, like a full door to a doorknob to a screw that's going to be used. So, you know, that, all of those items have to be vetted and approved by a, a number of individuals, including engineers and architects, depending on what is being submitted. And that, that's a long, ongoing process, especially at this part, because in order for the contractors to move forward with ordering anything, that those have to be approved by the architects and engineer. So they are, everyone is working well. They were actually on the site today, both engineers, architects and all five primes. And just ensuring that, you know, the communication is so key, especially when you're coordinating with the amount of individuals that are involved in this project. And, you know, so, so far so good, except for some of the noise we had last week. You know, we're hoping we're kind of beyond that and the weather has been cooperating. So, you know, it's, it's been great the last few weeks. So that concludes my update in terms of Hillside for this evening.
Just, you know, another opportunity, Maureen, to thank you and Joe for all that you've been doing. You know, this, you know, you eat and sleep and breathe this, you know, and you do it so well. So thank you for everything that you've done to manage all of the moving parts of this.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. So, yeah, and so far, you know, so far it's, as Valerie knows, you know, construction is, is tricky and, and, you know, so far, things have been working out as, as well as we could hope for, except for, of course, the initial delay. And we really appreciate on the cooperation. I know it has not been easy for those who are living through it. We, you know, Valerie and Melissa have got up and really visited classrooms. And, you know, we're, you know, we, we appreciate that there have been times in the, the first few weeks that the noise, you know, just those, it's easy for me sitting down here in my office, but we do appreciate the patience of, of the teachers that have had to, you know, listen to some, some, some noise level during the day. And, but we, we continue to, you know, just the communication is just key. And that seems to help us, you know, work together so that we're able to minimize the impacts. But, you know, of course, there is going to be some noise. It's just in, in order to get this kind of part of the work done. So, exciting.
I also want to thank you, Maureen and Joe. I just have one suggestion. If the, I know the communication from Amy and John has been very steady in terms of what's occurring at the building. But if it can be reiterated about the work that's going to be done during the break, I know many families, particularly those with young children, like to use the facilities, you know, the playground or the field. And if those areas are going to be restricted during the school break, I think it would be wise to let people know in advance so that they're not, you know, caught off guard by going up to Hillside and not being able to use those facilities during the school break.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do that, Lauren, when I'll speak to construction manager and get the updated schedule and then see what, what, if any limitations we may have to put on that. But that, that's a good suggestion.
We'll move on to the second public comment. If you would like to speak to the Board of Education, you may do so by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you can, please state your name. And if you're a resident of Hastings, and your comments will be limited to district business and limited to two minutes. Thank you.
Jennifer Destin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I wanted to share my gratitude for Valerie's role in the district over the past two years. As a parent of a child who has an IEP, we kind of hold our breath as a community as leadership changes, because sometimes the road is a little rough. And the first time I met Valerie, we were speaking about special education. She said to me that she felt it was a civil rights issue. And everything that she's done since, from overseeing the change of leadership at the middle school to supporting the FMS Inclusion Facilitator, to bringing in the master scheduler, has had a direct impact on children like my daughter. In fact, I can say with confidence that Nora's life is better because you've been here for two years. In fact, I can say with confidence that Nora's life is better because you've been here for two years. So I want to thank you and I'm very sad to see you go.
Thank you.
Marie Har.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I also, it's Marit Har. I live in Hastings. I have two children in the district. And I also just wanted to say thank you to Valerie. You know, it's, it's been such a tough couple of years. And I have so appreciated all that you have done and all the ways that you have made yourself accessible to parents in this district. You know, and all the ways you've led us through this pandemic. As Jen said, I too am very sorry to see you go. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, but I just, I just wanted to add to the, to the chorus of board members and, and say my appreciation for the past couple of years. And it's, it's, it's been a pleasure getting to know you a little bit. I wish we could have done more in person than we were able to do. But thank you and I wish you all the best of luck. Hopefully we will get to see you some more before the end of the year.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any more public comment.
Thank you, Melissa. Move on. We now have an opportunity for any board members who'd like to make a comment. Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Who seconded? I did not see.
Jody.
I think it was Jersey.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.